On streams. Recorded. Okay, I think we're good now.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order and apologize for the delay, but unusual circumstances. So thank you for your patience. Roll call, please.
Mary Canos?
Here.
Mr. Amalay?
Here.
Ms. Greenfield?
Here.
Ms. McCreedy?
Here.
Mr. McQueen?
Here.
Mr. Barrow is absent. Ms. Merritt is absent.
Okay, notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News and Courier News file with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We can stand for the pledge of allegiance. I don't know if I have a flag. I don't have a flag. Anybody got a flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right. Welcome to the June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers. Well, it's not in person, so sorry, I'm going to change that. It's being conducted on Zoom and broadcast live on YouTube to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend. Those attending on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the borough clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language, or language constituting hate speech, will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of allotted time, or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether on Zoom, shall state their name and address before making their comments. Speakers should activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body and audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and/or participation will not invalidate the meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. All right, is Johanna here? She is. You wanted to talk about the deer management, so I will let you do that. Can you unmute Johanna?
I have to unmute and reclaim my other host first, so let me do that. So, and. She should be able to unmute now.
There she goes. Okay.
Yes, I can't get video.
Okay.
All right, but good evening, everyone. Johanna Wishinger, Washington Corner Road. I'm speaking for the Environmental Commission tonight in regards to deer management. My computer went down, so my nice succinct notes aren't with me, but I'm sure I can do this. I'm here to persuade the council to give their consent for a change of our deer management. I was introduced to Jim Emery through John Tom Janeki, and had several emails, exchanges, and then I was impressed with him, and I had conversations by phone. I invited him to the Environmental Commission, and he made a presentation, answered our questions, and I think I can barely say that the members of the commission were equally impressed. I have three main reasons that I would like to share with you of why I think Jim Emery will be ideal for Burnsville. The first one is he has an understanding and appreciation for ecosystems. It's very important. In fact, the name of his agency is Sustainable Habitat Solutions. So that's pretty good for an environmentalist viewpoint. His partner is an environmental scientist. So I'm very interested in balance. That was our premise from the beginning when the green team first initiated a deer management program in two thousand and eleven. And I was happy that Mr. Emery is willing. In fact, he suggested, to my great pleasure, to do a deer inventory as a base, which is precisely what I would want. I think these animals are beautiful. It's just that unfortunately, because they were reintroduced, their numbers are out of hand. I'm most concerned about the degradation of our forests. The second thing is he has a good understanding of the most important safety measures, and I'm glad to hear that. The Environmental Commission is, their goal is to have our trails being used well. And I know that the state for the licensing and permitting has, you know, a lot of safety in place, but if you approve my suggestion, I would like to, I will meet with, I'll arrange the meeting with police chief to meet with myself and Mr. Emery, and another environmental mission who will take on liaison for managing it. The third thing is he is a resident and part of the community. The day he came to, the night he came to the Environmental Mission, he was off to a coaching position that he was doing. So actually, because he is a resident, that reinforces and enhances the first one, which is a good ecological, he will be on ground, he knows the areas, he knows or open space areas. So and the second one, it'd be easy to connect with the police and the rest of the community. So.
Johanna, can I ask a question?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I was going to open that to that. I just want to say he does a food bank, too. I mean, he's connected with a food bank. So, yeah, so what's your question, Mayor?
This is, he is to replace who?
Yes, he is to replace the Warren Blue Ridge Sports Club. They have not responded to or reaching out to them. I just suspect that they are not particularly interested in Burnsville. So, yeah, so I will, if you sanction this, then I will, I will tell them, I'll send them an email explaining. So we're not under contract. It was just an agreement.
And when do they?
Jack, do we need to push a resolution for this, or is it something that doesn't matter?
Yeah, we should certainly do a resolution, setting forth the terms. You know, I'd pull up the old one that we did for the gun club. So, yeah, it shouldn't just be a motion saying go ahead. You know, we require insurance and things like that, full-time, yes.
Okay, so Anthony is helping me with that, and he, yeah, okay, whatever you decide. He's already submitted something, but Anthony is requesting more, you know, but it was pending on what the council decided.
I would be, I'll give a straw man. I'm fine in favor of Jim Emery and his group.
Does he have a group?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's a small group, which is my philosophy. The reason why I didn't, I came to you the last time is I did not want it open to all state hunters. And this is even a smaller group. My feeling is the smaller it is, the more we know them, the more control we have.
Yeah, is there a time limit on when he needs to know?
I don't think so. He did not express it. He was coming to this meeting, but I don't see his name.
But I mean, just wondering if we can have the agenda for the next meeting, if that would be, I mean, the resolution for the next agenda, would that be okay?
Sure, I wanted him to do that. Well, he might do that in the fall anyhow. Sure, whatever works out. And I did want to get, since this is all new to me, this part, that I know a lot about deer management, but the logistics this way, I wanted to make sure everything was set up before hunting, deer hunting season.
Which usually starts in the fall, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have a resolution for the next meeting then.
Okay. Great, thank you, Johanna. Thanks for doing the background work on that. All right, we now have an open session, oh, no, minutes, sorry, approval of minutes from May eighth and May twenty-second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May and.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We now have an open session for items not listed for a public hearing. And I already went through the, please give your name and address, and if you can use the hand icon, so we know if somebody wants to speak, and Anthony will keep track of your time. So would anyone like to be heard on any issue that's not already on for a public hearing? A lot of people here.
I'm scrolling through, and at the top, there's usually a little symbol that shows how many people have their hand up, and I don't see anybody right now.
No, I don't either. And there's another session later, so maybe. Okay, then I will close the open session. And I will open the public hearing on ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, nineteen sixty-nine, and salary ordinance for employees of the borough of Burnsville who are police dispatchers. Would anyone in the public like to be heard on this ordinance? I am not seeing any, so I will close the public hearing. Gina, you want to move that one?
Yes, I'm just getting the, I'm unable to get in and open up the packet. Okay, we are, this is.
Number seven.
Nineteen.
Sixty-nine.
The. Okay, here we go. Sorry, I moved to pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen sixty-nine on final reading and adopt as published.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Amalay?
Oh, you're muted, Jay.
Yes. Ms. Greenfield?
Yes.
Ms. McCreedy?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
All right, I will now open the public hearing on ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, nineteen seventy, and ordinance amending salary ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, nineteen fifty-five. Would anyone in the public wish to be heard on this ordinance? It's just making a salary adjustment. Not seeing any, so I will close the public hearing. Jay, you want to do that one?
Muted.
I know, it's so frustrating.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just looking for the, I'm I'm missing it on my sheet. I move to pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen seventy on final reading and adopt as published.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCreedy?
Yes.
Ms. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Amalay?
Yes.
So on ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, nineteen seventy-one, we are going to continue the public hearing to July tenth, mainly because we don't have enough voters, I guess, do we?
That's right.
We don't have a quorum.
Oh, no, we don't. Yeah, Jay, you abstain on this. So Chad, you want to just move the, to continue?
Nineteen seventy-one gives me angst. Do I have to? I'll move to continue, two thousand and twenty through nineteen seventy-one, to the, what is it, July tenth meeting at seven?
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
That's just an all in favor, right? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No, okay. Ah, now I will open the public hearing on ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, nineteen seventy-two, appropriating the sum of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars for various equipment and improvements. This, by the way, is from the sewer department, so it's from their capital fund. So anyone in the public wish to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Diane, you want to do that one?
I move to pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen seventy-two on final reading and adopt as published.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Amalay?
You're muted.
Muted, yes. Ms. Greenfield?
Yes.
Ms. McCreedy?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
All right, now we're into introduction of ordinances. Who wants to do that one? Chad?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. I move the ordinance two thousand and twenty-three, nineteen seventy-three, appropriating the sum of one hundred and ten thousand for water meter extensions to W W T P. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, and published according to law, and at a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven P M. Monday, July tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Diane, why don't you move this one? You did a lot of work on this.
I move that ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen seventy-four, allowing non-family members to occupy detached accessory dwelling units in the R one in R one ten zone. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and at a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven o'clock P M. Monday, August? Why August?
Because it has to go through the planning board cycle.
Oh, okay, okay. August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
All right, I just got a text from Tim Richard. We are down to eighteen hundred customers out of power now. We were up at like three thousand, so J C P N L is making progress.
And I guess thank you to the state and J C, J C P N L. I think the response was swift. I know, Mayor, you got immediate calls from the state, so we're very thankful to have their support.
Yeah, thank you. Moving on to resolutions.
I wish you'd place vote on this.
Oh, sorry, I got carried away with this text I got from Tim. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now resolutions, twenty-three, one twenty-eight to twenty-three, one thirty-four. Any that you would like to discuss separately?
Got a question. Twenty-three, one thirty-three, was, was this a patrolman, was he, is he new?
Yeah, he was within his probationary period.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Okay, who would like to move those?
I'll do it.
Resolution twenty, twenty-three, one twenty-eight through twenty-three, one thirty-four.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCreedy?
Yes.
Ms. Greenfield? Sorry, Ms. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Amalay?
Yes.
All right, moving on to reports, mayor's update. On June thirteenth, I did go to Perth Amboy for the D E P grant announcements. They have done an amazing job on their waterfront. I had not been there, so they didn't really announce who was getting the grants, but we were invited, so I assume we're getting a grant. On the fourteenth, I attended the league mini-conference, so did Nancy. We sat in on a program on pilot agreements, which was really very informative, and we made some good contacts, and then a program on the changes in election law and what's going on with the November elections. On the fifteenth, Doug, Nancy, and I met with Ashwin Barama. If you remember, he's the wind bush. This is the, actually, he's a senior now. And that's interesting. It's telling me the meeting's ending in ten minutes.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to call Chris immediately. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Ashwin, when he was a sophomore, started this project as kind of a special credit project, investigating these wind bushes, which are kind of a new form of electricity. Started in France, and he raised the twenty-five thousand dollars for us to have one. We will be, I think, the only one on the East Coast. So we were talking about where to put it, and we were going to put it at the Polo Grounds, but thought it would be probably more likely to get vandalized there. So we've decided to do it at the new, you know, with Nirveen Park, after the dam is remediated, so right now we have it. It's in the pole barn. So we're looking forward to getting that done. Ashwin is now just graduated, actually. So we'll be working with him to get that done. Um, what?
So I see the angst in Anthony's eyes. Anthony, pay the fourteen ninety-nine. Just put it on your card.
And get reimbursed.
Yeah, because to be honest, if we can't, shutting the meeting down and getting him back on a different length is not going to be possible.
Yeah. Chris has dialed into my computer, so he's going to work on it, but yeah, I can.
Knowing Zoom the way I do, you guys are logged in through a free account. The only way you're going to get, you either have to shut down and log in through a different account, or you pay the fourteen ninety-nine.
Where do I do that, though? I'll do it.
If you go into your account settings.
Okay.
Do you want to make, you want to make me a host and see if I can help you?
Yeah, we do not want that to happen. Okay, moving right along while you're working on that. I did attend a mayor's wellness campaign data seminar in Hamilton Township. Very informative on how we collect, can collect data to assess our community. I also attended on the twenty-first and twenty-second, the New Jersey Planning and Redevelopment Conference. I attended a seminar on the fourth round obligations for affordable housing that are coming up. Hopefully, at least from the panel that I listen to, there will be more coordination among the courts and the towns and the counties, so hopefully it'll be some improvements to how they calculate our obligation. I also sat in on a keynote by Jeff Otto on inflation, interest rate, and indicators of New Jersey's post-pandemic economy. And I sent you all kind of my summary notes, because I thought it was really interesting what some of those trends are that he pointed out. And also a program that was designing community-driven headquarters in live-work-play neighborhoods, which was about a project in Marstown. Valley Bank has moved their headquarters there and done a lot to improve the community.
Mary Jane, can I interrupt you? I'm sorry, because we're going to time out here in about five minutes. Anthony, in your, in the Zoom where you guys started the conference?
Yeah.
Wherever you logged in, you must have logged in differently, so I can't access through the internet your web Zoom portal?
I think I see something that says view my subscription. I might have to reclaim the host.
It says it's been upgraded.
Okay, okay.
All right, recovered.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, perfect. Okay, good.
You know that little timer that you show everybody? I just feel with it on you for a change.
Yeah, counting down. Yeah, let's see, the twenty-first. Actually, Nancy and I attended a webinar by the Somerset County Business Partnership on impacting the employee experience through organizational clarity. We've been talking about different ways to affect the culture of the borough. And then I attended the grand opening of the new offices for the New Jersey Conference of Mayors in Trenton. They are right across from the State House, so hopefully that will make lobbying a lot easier. And I don't know if you brought it, but I can't show it to New Jersey Business Magazine. I don't know if you saw this, but we were featured.
Really?
See that?
Yep.
Very nice little write-up about us in the New Jersey Business Magazine. So if you don't have one, you can see it online, or you can get a copy from them. This is the magazine. So, yeah, and that was thanks to Lucille Plumstead, who is the Burnsville Center manager. She reached out and had them come out here, and they were impressed, so good to know. All right, that's my report. Nancy, do you have anything?
I just have two things. We just completed the well, well-water testing kit sale, and there were twenty-four takers, so twenty-four people bought test kits and are having the water tested by the Raridan Headwaters. And our motor vehicle mobile unit is still on July twenty-second. There were a total of fifty open slots, and there are thirty-one taken, so was that nineteen?
Yeah.
Nineteen left. So people can go on our website and sign up. I don't believe you can pick a time anymore, but you can, people who are there for something that's other than the real ID, it's a first-come, first-served basis, so there's room for nineteen more people, so hopefully we'll have a full house.
Yeah, great, thank you, and thanks for making that arrangement. I think people really appreciate having it be convenient like that, and it will be at the train station.
It's at the train station, yeah. And it's from, I think, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it was ten to two, but it's on the front page of our website.
Yeah, thank you. Do I have a motion to accept department monthly reports?
I move to accept department monthly reports.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Are we going to do committee reports?
We're not there yet.
Oh, all right.
Jack, we have your report, so nothing new. Okay, public safety.
Okay. Public safety met on June fifteenth. The Burris Avenue sidewalk plan, public safety agrees with the sidewalk plan previously presented by Public Works. We feel that having the sidewalk go all the way to Mount Erie Road is the best option. Burnet's Ave is one of the busiest pedestrian streets in the borough, and pedestrian safety is the number one priority here. Parking issues on Burris Avenue and the surrounding streets. The committee discussed the possibility of striping parking spaces to better organize the parking situation in the area for the residents. This issue was brought to Public Works to overlay if and where this could possibly be accomplished. Facility upgrades, construction is complete on a storage room that has been turned into a locker for female police officers. We will have one female officer starting later this year. Dispatch console, we are looking at issues regarding our police dispatch console center. The police department is obtaining estimates for replacement, and we will also be evaluating secondary backup systems and other potential options. We had a resident request for better lighting at the State to Save Street and Somerset Avenue, and Public Works has been asked to look into what brighter lighting at this location was involved, and they will be consulting with J C P N L on this issue. And that's it for public safety.
All right, any questions, anybody? Nope, good, okay.
Everyone else is on public safety.
Um. Finance, I don't believe you've met, have you?
We did, we did not meet, and I guess I'll take this moment. Super congratulations to Al.
Yeah, for those that don't know, Al last night had a baby boy. Yeah, for those that don't know, Al last night had a baby boy. Arden Armando Ribeiro, I believe. Um, family is all doing well, so, yeah, exciting. Um, what are we up to? Personnel has not met, um, but we have, we will be, we have an issue in, um, executive that we will be talking about. Uh, Public Works?
I could do Public Works if you want. Christine's not here.
Yeah.
Here's Al. Um, Bernard's Avenue, uh, sidewalk grant was submitted for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the sidewalk project also does involve lighting, Chad, as you asked me that question.
Yep.
Uh, dam remediation plans have been submitted to New Jersey D E P dam safety for review and approval. Uh, the pavilion at Polo Grounds, um, the architect is revising plans, removing the second floor. Uh, larger, uh, restrooms and fixtures and finishes are being revised. Uh, the timeline for this, Gina had asked, uh, utilities and water, uh, sewer will be the first things to happen. Um, and, uh, the last thing to happen, um, for phase one will be the walk-in pad. Um, Bernard's Avenue roadway project, the drainage is complete and they will, starting the, the curving, well, hopefully this week. Uh, the Bernard's Avenue Neighborhood roadway project, the drainage is complete and the work, um, curb work is currently being finished up. Uh, West and Bolin sidewalk, uh, engineering is nearly finished. Uh, the library roof replacement, architects are working on the design for the roof replacement and the timeframe for this is September or October. And Campbell Road, the engineering is in process. There was a meeting, uh, at the end of May to identify additional drainage needs and areas in need of reconstruction versus just simple mill and pave. That's it for public works.
Diane, did, did, uh, Public Works meet after we talked at safety? I'm wondering if they agreed or if they had any suggestions of pushback on the striping suggestion from safety.
Uh, the chief and Doug are gonna take a look at the, um, uh, the distances and, and see if it's possible. On it, uh, the chief said they wanted to wait till after the road was finished. They're gonna walk the streets. Um, it's certain, it, it's not looking great, but they're gonna measure everything out anyway. Um, yeah.
But let's, let's put, let's push engineering to a path to yes.
Yeah, they, they said they'd have to make, probably have to make the streets a one-way.
Yeah, because they're, they're just so narrow.
Take a look at that inside some of the streets.
That may not be a terrible idea either.
Well, yeah, well, but, you know.
That's, yeah, it might work. You never know. That's why we have engineers figure this stuff out. Um, any other land use? We did not meet, um, any other liaison reports?
No, the, um, planning board's meeting was canceled, um, I think, two weeks ago, so we have a meeting this Thursday. I haven't looked at the agenda yet. Um.
I don't think we got it yet.
Okay, that's why I didn't look at it very again.
Uh, any other else have, I know it's only, it's been two weeks since our last meeting, so probably most groups haven't met.
We have two liaison reports or no?
Hmm?
Liaison reports we're up to?
Yes, you have one?
Yeah. Um, recreation met on June thirteenth. Uh, safety fencing was installed at the lower Polo Ball Field. Uh, the trails committee, subcommittee has been busy with cleanup at two sixty-seven Mine Brook Road Trail. The committee continues to collect signatures to name that facility, Kirkpatrick Park, currently have over a hundred and sixty. If anyone would like to help or, uh, sign it or help collect signatures, please let me know. A special thanks to D P W for helping with trail maintenance at Peters Track Trail. The trail subcommittee will be working with recreation and D P W to come up with a more permanent solution to the issue of trail maintenance. Um, and for recreation, uh, housing met on June sixteenth. Committee discussed additional recommendations to approve the outdoor dining ordinance. I forwarded the recommendations to the mayor to distribute to the rest of council and to add to our agenda for discussion. Um, we also discussed, uh, looking into whether our zoning ordinance section on warehouses need, needed to be revised. The committee will be researching other towns' ordinances on this topic. And we discussed generator use and who would be in charge of recommending procedures that should be put in place for the construction of new apartment buildings so that they are prepared for emergency situations such as power.
Okay, this never happens, Diane.
No, never happened.
And H pack been taught me.
I just got a very, I just got a very troubling picture. I know a lot of people, but there's a tree in the middle of a quannus that makes me very unhappy. How are we gonna play baseball tomorrow?
Ah, geez.
Come on.
Okay, moving on, items of business, um, the King of Kings food pantry. Um, as you recall in the past, what we've done, they were in the fieldhouse, I believe, during the winter and then last year, I believe they were in Ameren in the nicer months. Uh, and I, they want to go back to Ameren now? Is that what's going on, Anthony?
Yes, they want, they want to resume Ameren on Tuesdays from three thirty to four thirty.
Yeah.
And that worked, I mean, especially there's no school buses or anything else going on, so, um, are we all okay with that?
I am, and, and nothing's moved to the planning board, so the, yeah, nothing's closed, so.
Yeah, and they've gotten all their insurance things to you, right? You have all that?
Yes, they, they, they're getting you the whole harmless and insurance, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if we could, um, there's always, we talk about a public safety about the, um, that crosswalk there, so if, Anthony, if we can just tell, you know, the teams to, you know, highlight the crosswalk and the use of the crosswalks and nobody gets hurt over there.
Yeah, I know, a lot of people try and run across right at the parking lot, which is very dangerous, so.
Just use the crosswalks, they're there.
That's what they're there for. All right, um, do we, you don't, I don't think we had any official correspondence, did we? And unfinished business? Do we have unfinished anything? New business?
There's a tree in the middle of a quannus.
That's new business, yes.
I, I'm joking because I, obviously I'm on the executive, um, the old executive, uh, text thread. And, yeah, everybody's trying to figure out they can play baseball tomorrow and I'm saying we have bigger problems in town.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, okay, so we are ready to go into closed session. Um. Just, I don't know who wants to comment. Nancy, do you want to comment on these resolutions and where they stand right now? Because I don't want people to hang on forever if.
I think we have another open, we have another open session.
Oh, I'm sorry, totally missed that, okay. Yeah, um, so we have another open session. If anyone wants to comment on anything? Raise your hand. I am scrolling. You seeing anything, Anthony?
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Um. Nope. All right, um, so we'll close the public session. So back to these two, um, resolutions, because we were gonna go into executive session for a discussion on these two issues and then come back out, um, to see whether or not we are going to move forward with any of them. Um, I don't think, I think the, uh, Ameren one, we are not gonna, we're not finished with that. Is that correct, Nancy?
It's Audi.
I mean, Audi.
Audi.
I got it.
Um, right, Audi is gonna be, uh, I guess, table two future meeting because the developer needs to continue to review the agreement, so they're not ready.
Okay.
Um. I don't know if, uh, I mean, you need to discuss, uh, I guess Joe is going into executive with us. You need to discuss, um, the developer asked for changes. And you need to discuss them. I mean, my recommendation, I did talk to Jack about this, since you don't have the full council, that maybe you did not vote on that tonight, but, you know, that's your call.
Okay. So, um. So we will be going into executive session. Um, I don't know if people want to stay on, we will come back out. I, I just feel bad for the public having to sit there while we do, because we've got a number of things to go over.
To be honest, Mayor, Mayor, it's easier that way.
What?
If, I mean, they're on Zoom, so it's easier, they can.
Yeah, you can go have a cup of coffee, come watch a TV show and come back. Just leave your computer on. Um, so do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mayor, is it possible for us to talk about the items that are scheduled for the end of the meeting? First, so we can come back out if we're going to and then go back, because I know there's several things on the exec session that we may not be coming back out for. So is it possible to kind of split it so that we can come back if, if, I, I'm guessing there's some comments on those last two sections and I don't know how long exec's gonna last.
Well, the last two, they, they just said Audi was not gonna be.
Yeah.
We're not gonna vote on that one, so it's one thirty-six is off the table, so it would just be one thirty-five and I'm I'm kind of agreeing with Nancy that I don't, I think we should wait for the full council to be here in order to vote on this resolution. That would be my. Some, then we wouldn't come back out if we're not voting on it, but.
Anybody else agree with Gina?
I do.
Well, then obviously we couldn't vote because we wouldn't have enough votes. Right? Am I correct? Diane?
Could be a two-two guy and you would have to break it, but I, I think what Nancy.
I'm fine either way. I think I, it would be a good idea to wait for Alan Christine, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm with Diane. I'm a little indifferent either way. I think we've talked about this a lot. Um, obviously there's one issue that I think we need to discuss contractually, so. I think it's worth having the discussion to see where we are. Um.
Yeah.
But I'm fine delaying the vote if we want to.
Okay.
Because, look, if we, if we have to negotiate further, I, we should probably continue that process.
If we are not, um, gonna vote on either one of those items, then are we coming back out?
Uh, probably if we go to executive session, we'd probably have to go back out to say that we're not going to.
Going back out.
Yeah.
Well, you can make, you can make that determination now, but you're not gonna see, pardon my voice.
Right, that's why I brought it up before we left, because we're not gonna come back out, but everybody can just.
We're gonna, we can inform the public now. You just wouldn't have the option of coming back out and acting.
Right.
Change your mind.
Yes. Yeah, but I don't think, I, I, my, the consensus I'm seeing here is that we don't want to act on this tonight.
Correct.
So we'll put it off to the next, hopefully, uh, July tenth.
Ten.
Yeah. So we'll be adjourned at the close of executive.
Right, so we will close after executive, so we will not be voting on this tonight. So thank you all for being here. Um. Stay safe. I hope your power gets back. I know there's more rain predicted for tomorrow, so just be safe. And thank you. Do I have a motion for executive?
I'll make the motion to move it to executive.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I will stop the recording and then, uh, shift some boxes, uh, except for the mayor, council and attorney. And administrator.